One, folks.
All right.
All right. All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at seven oh one.
Beautiful.
P M. And let's cover those consent agenda items. A quick reminder to my colleagues at the microphones to make sure you talk into them. And if you're gonna roll away, take them with you so that everyone can hear us. All right, consent agenda items tonight include our minutes from the November third board meeting, general fund vouchers, purchasing card transactions, certified and co-curricular staffing recommendations. If there's anything that anyone wants to pull out from the consent agenda to talk about, let's do that. Otherwise, I would look for a motion.
I can make that.
All right. Bruce?
I second.
All right, Megan, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero. It's so good to say five zero. Welcome back, Craig.
Thank you.
All right. And then, as usual, there are personnel items that where there is no vote necessary. Do we have any public comments? Okay. All righty. Then we are on to our fabulous McFarland High School student report. Looks like we have Anna here.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hello.
Let me share my screen quick.
I suppose.
If that's okay with everyone.
Absolutely.
All right. Let me know when you can see it at full screen. You know, it takes a couple of seconds for you guys to see what I'm seeing.
Ta-da.
Good?
Good.
All right, perfect. So I'm just gonna start with some highlights from these past two weeks. This past Thursday, juniors taking political science participated in our third committee day where students in political science debate with their peers on bills they wrote regarding issues they care about. I'm a TA for political science, so I got to be there and kinda help with the process. So that was fun being in that role instead of what I did last year. You know, debating the bills myself. It was a tough crowd and only thirteen out of thirty-four bills passed during this full set. During this session. And then, in a couple of weeks, there'll be a full session and they'll debate them all in the PAC as a big group. So that'll be exciting. Also, this past Saturday, Model UN hosted a five hundred-plus delegate conference. This year's theme was dismantling veils of deception. And they had a former career diplomat who worked in hostile territories as their keynote speaker. It was entirely McFarland student-led and the executive bar board of Maisy Bearman, Micah Kinchi, Mary Deser, and Isaac Gamble did a lot of work to make Model UN happen. I was there, cause I had to be there for choir and there were a lot of students in there. So it was definitely a lot of work that they put in. Focusing on our clubs for student council, we hosted our annual Veterans Day breakfast and had the biggest attendance so far. We had twenty veterans and thirty students attend to honor McFarland, our community. And it was really great. We got to talk, eat some good food. It was fun. And then, reading club wanted us to tell you that they're planning to do a school-wide reading day before we head off. We used to do that in elementary school and I guess they're getting back on it to promote just fun reading. DECA, they have an upcoming event for younger students in the community, allowing them to make entrepreneurship projects on November twenty-first. That'll be in the high school. And they kinda just, I think, kids can make whatever they want. Some did like bracelet. Companies that they made last year or like sock monkeys, I think I remember seeing on Instagram. So that seems to be a fun event. And then, for Hope Squad, we are suicide prevention club and we're working on interviews for new members this week. And we just finished an application for a grant today. So that is exciting. Moving on to performing arts, the past, this past Saturday, like a week ago Saturday, our drama program finished its fall play production of It's a Wonderful Life. They successfully packed our Black Box Theater for four nights. I won, it was pretty good. And then, I don't have any pictures, cause it was just this past Saturday. But our choir program sold about three hundred tickets for the Killer Cabaret. And it had six full choir acts and over ten solo duo, small group acts, as well as skits. It was a fun night, a lot of, a lot of our choir students putting a lot of hard work into it. And then, regarding athletics, Girl Swim just placed, well, placed second at sectionals this past weekend. And then, they qualified for the state tournament this Saturday with a team for, of Olivia Tierney, Lil Guy, Ellie Forbes, Sophia Leskey, Audrey Tobeast, Helen Sadler, Casey Draper, and Kaylee Coonzie. And they, at state this Saturday, they podiumed in three events with fifth and sixth place for all three of them. So that was exciting for their program. And then, last Saturday, the boys soccer team had an unfortunate loss against Notre Dame at the state tournament. So their season was brought to an end. But eight of our players ended up receiving first team, second team, or honorable mention through our federal small all-conference. So that is cool. Signing days, seniors have started to sign for their collegiate sports. This is Kayla Landred last week signing for D-one Milwaukee volleyball. And just today, Jayla Moi- Moore signed for D-one Milwaukee soccer. Yeah, and then, I just wanted to tell you guys about some upcoming student council events. We've got tomorrow, we have, or Wednesday, we have a meeting. So we're gonna do some cards for our MHS staff. And then, next week, we've got some volunteer things through our senior outreach center where we're gonna be packing fifty-five Thanksgiving meals for community seniors as well as cleaning all their medical, medical equipment, like wheelchairs and stuff like that. So that'll be next week. And then, we also just picked up ten students for our, for the like holiday gift drive that we're gonna be shopping for next weekend. So that's exciting as well. But that is all I have for you guys. Do I have any questions at all? I'm sorry, I feel like I hear a question, but I can't.
Oh, it's okay. It's Megan Chapman. I was just wondering if you knew the day of the political science full-day bill debate session that's gonna be in the PAC.
I'm sorry, we're timed, or if someone that has a microphone could repeat it.
Okay, it is on. Can you hear me?
I wonder if it's at your, at the computer, like where we're broadcasting from? Can you hear me, Anna?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, so what, so what Megan Chapman's question was, was what is the, do you know the date of the full-day poli sci event?
I don't, off the top of my head. But I can see if I can check for you. I think it's, it is gonna be in like a couple of weeks. I think it's after we get back from Thanksgiving break. So it'll be, I believe it's December, it's two days. One, you do like the first half, and I think it's December tenth and twelve. But I can get back to you on that if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Did you have another question?
No.
Okay. Anyone else?
Doing lots of good things.
Thank you.
Yep, I agree.
All right, thank you so much, guys.
Thanks, Anna.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Have a good rest, good night.
You too. All right. That's always a fun one. All right, so now we've got the, the City of Madison and Village of McFarland development updates.
All right.
Yeah, come on up.
With introducing these two individuals and representatives. Just to reorientate everybody, the map of our school is.
Can I, I'm, yeah, can you?
I can yell so they can really hear me. Thanks, Andrew, I'll just duck down. Just kinda reorientate everybody. Our district does stretch all the way to the north, up by Buckeye Road. Down to the south, town of Down area. To the east, Pleasant Springs. To the west, the lake where we don't have many children. So, about every five to seven years, over the last twenty-plus years, we've had the Village of McFarland and the City of Madison's economic development departments, planning departments, have representatives come and tell us about what's going on in their parts of our school district. So we have Jeffrey Gregor from the City of Madison, Andrew Bremmer from the Village of McFarland, to kinda guide us through what's going on, you know, over the, more of the long-term goals of development of our areas in our school district. We end up, as a school district and school board, end up using this information to A, kinda look at long-range population growth, which usually impacts our student growth. And B, equalized value, see where our equalized values are going, potentially into the long-term future, which all of that can culminate into where might our schools exist long into the future. So we will continue some of that journey later this fiscal year. But we'll turn it over to Jeff and Andrew. Who wants to go first?
I can go first.
All right.
All right.
Second time.
Second time.
Okay. Good thing you already showed it to us.
All right, again, my name's Jeff Gregor. I'm with the City of Madison Planning Division, currently working on the southeast area plan. So I'll give you a briefing on that. And then, also talk about the far southeast area plan, when that might start up. That has the bulk of, or a good chunk of the school district that will be within the City of Madison in the future. Next slide, please. So, the City of Madison just recently started these area plan efforts. We started with the west and the northeast area plans about two years ago. Those have been adopted and we are currently working on the southeast area and the southwest area plan. So these area plans kind of feed into our comprehensive plan, which has larger goals for the city. These plans cover the entire, will, they will cover the entire city. It'll probably take another six to eight years to get that full coverage. But when that happens, we'll have full city coverage with area plans. These plans will get more frequent updates about every ten years. And they deal with, you know, higher-level topics like land use, transportation, parks and recreation, that sort of thing. And it also helps us kinda coordinate on other city initiatives that might be going on in other agencies. And we're really focusing our feedback from hearing from underrepresented groups. Next slide. So you can see the southeast area there is circled in orange. And then, the far southeast is just to the east of that. Next one. So the boundaries for the southeast area plan, Highway thirty on the north, we go all the way down to Sigal Cow Road in the Village of McFarland. The eastern boundary is I thirty-nine ninety. And our western boundary is the City of Manona and Lake Manona. We have about eleven thousand housing units and about twenty-five thousand people. Just under twenty-six percent identify as BIPOC or Hispanic. Next slide. We started this plan all the way back in December of twenty twenty-four. We had our kickoff meeting at La Follette High School. Since then, we've done a number of engagements. We put out a two-part survey. We've had some interactive commenting maps. We did a fun Madison Ma- Madison Madness bracket exercise around the college basketball tournament. We've worked with the UW People Program at La Follette High School with some high school students. We've done coordination with our neighbors. We've reached out to all the school districts. I've had some interactions with Jeff the last year or so. We've been doing some work in the High Stand neighborhood. We have a community action strategy that, we have some CDBG funding potentially from the federal government to work with that neighborhood. So we've wrapped up that initial feedback stage of our, our project and now we're moving into recommendations. Next slide. I just did a enlargement of our school district map to show the area of the McFarland School District. It's an orange that falls within the southeast area. The red dash circle area is really the only area of undeveloped potential within the southeast area. And that's currently a quarry site, which is in the town of Blooming Grove. And a couple of slides from now, I'll show you what we're showing for future development potential for that site. But I just wanted to kinda zero in on the one future development area in the southeast area. Next slide, please. We've had some notable topics come up throughout this planning effort. We've had, we're proposing to add a land use category. We're basically adding density along our transit corridors. So that would be Milwaukee Street, Cottage Grove Road, Atwood. And then, some potential with Stoughton Road, depending on how the DOT decides what they wanna do there with which concept. Stoughton Road design, obviously, has been a big topic of this planning effort. And then, we've got some older neighborhoods, former town neighborhoods that have missing sidewalks. We wanna make some connections to schools and other community places within those neighborhoods. Pedestrian safety has been a big issue, especially along Milwaukee Street, Buckeye, along Highway fifty-one crossings of that. And then, we've identified a north-south transit gap that would potentially add more access to La Follette High School and employment areas, kind of in those industrial areas. Next slide. So, the text is really weird on that slide, but sorry about that. So we've added a new land use, or we're proposing to add a new land use category. We're calling it medium residential one. It kinda falls between our low-medium residential and what we're now calling our medium residential two. The, the building forms and heights used to be, that are being proposed for medium residential one were asterisks in the table under low-medium residential. This is more to clarify and be transparent with our recommendations and our land use plan. Happy to get into those specifics if you're interested. I don't know that they really apply for this discussion, but I just wanted to bring that up. Next slide. And here are the, the corridors that I mentioned, where we're looking to add density. If you look at our current future land use map in our comp plan, you'll see a lot of these same colors. Essentially, in those red dashed areas, we're trying to increase the density. So if it was currently proposed for neighborhood mixed use, we may be increasing that to community mixed use. So greater density, greater height. There's also a red dash circle at the intersection of Von Dron and Buckeye. We received a lot of feedback from the community that folks wanted walkable retail in their neighborhoods. And currently, that's, that's a place that doesn't have it. There is a vacant church on the southwest corner of that intersection that could be potentially redeveloped into a mixed use, a start of a mixed use node. So we'll see how folks react to that. Next slide. And this is that one area, the quarry that I mentioned before. The plan is proposing a new neighborhood or with a makeup of low-density resident, or low-residential and low-medium residential. There's a large green area that would be for stormwater and potentially some park space. There is a historic resource kind of in the middle of that quarry that we would be preserving as well. And then, we're showing an area for employment that could be kind of light industrial with office up front, that sort of thing. Best guess, if this were to develop, you might see eighty to a hundred and twenty-five dwelling units. That's just a rough estimate. It really depends on whoever develops this, you know, how far on the density range they wanna go. But again, that's, that's an estimate. And like I said before, this property is currently in the town of Blooming Grove. It will come into the City of Madison October thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. All signs point to that it will remain a quarry for the near future. We haven't had any interest in redeveloping of it. But we're putting the plans in place, you know, in case that were to happen in the future. We would be signaling to the development community what City of Madison would be looking for. So, like I said, don't anticipate that happening probably within the span of the ten years of the plan. We'll probably do another update to this plan before we might see anything happen there. But again, that's just my best guess and estimate.
And the historical, is that, that's indigenous, isn't it?
Yes. Yep. Next slide, please. This is Highway fifty-one between Buckeye and Tompkins. On the left is what we would be proposing for our generalized future land use for that corridor. If the DOT chooses a forty-five mile an hour limited access highway in their study. Essentially, those are existing land uses. We're not proposing any significant changes to those. On the right, if they choose the thirty-five mile an hour urban boulevard concept, then we would see land uses changing to community mixed use, especially around the Flom intersection, the Buckeye intersection. Those blue arrows are some street extensions, potential street extensions across fifty-one. Both concepts, they would be adding a lane in each direction. The change would be on the thirty-five mile an hour urban boulevard. The frontage roads would go away in that section between Buckeye and Tompkins. So we'll see, the DOT study is not likely to wrap up before the southeast area plan gets adopted. So we'll likely be putting in both of these options, just to hedge our bets a little bit. The graphics on the right are just kind of a block diagram of what redevelopment could look like in the future if it were, were to go to that urban boulevard. So happy to answer any questions you might have on that if you do, but I'll keep going here. So our, our schedule for this plan, we've wrapped up our issues and opportunities, our phase one. We're wrapping up our phase two here at, by the end of the month, early December. We've released draft action items, recommendations. We have a online commenting map for folks to give us input on those. That'll be closing, that in, online commenting map will be closing on December fourth. Once that's, we have all the input from various sources, we'll start drafting the full document here in December and January. And then, I believe mid-February timeframe, we'll be releasing the full document, draft document for public review and then putting it in for adoption. We hope to have that adopted by May of twenty twenty-six and then we will start implementation. I think I have one more slide. I just wanted to briefly talk about the far southeast area plan. Right now, it's anticipated that that plan would start likely the second half of twenty twenty-nine and be adopted in twenty thirty-one. Until then, the Yahara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan will be the plan for that area. That was adopted, I believe, back in twenty eighteen timeframe. I worked on that, I should know. It's been a while. We have not had a whole lot of interest in that planning area, other than some industrial along Femrite Drive and a little bit at Highway AB and the Belt Line. Again, nothing really has come to fruition from those, but we continue to get feelers put out for potential projects. But again, they're all industrial in nature, nothing residential. And with the land use, or the landfill being open for another, I think about a decade, I don't think anything likely will happen in that future neighborhood that's planned in the neighborhood plan, but you never know. So, yeah. Think, one more slide, just, these QR codes will take you to our project webpage, the one on the right. And then, the one on the left takes you to the commenting map, if you're so interested in taking a look at everything more in depth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Those of you who are watching, I will have to give you guys kudos to the city. That the planning map going in and like giving your comments and feedback is really intuitive, I would say. And joining in on some of the webinars and things that you guys have had for public feedback has been insightful. Like, it's well done, so.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Awesome.
So towards the end there, Jeffrey brought up one of the more important areas that impacted some of our decisions the school district made, you know, almost a decade ago, just kinda knowing that there could have been, or still could be some high-density or higher-density housing in the north part of our school district. And we've been, you know, monitoring that with updates from the City of Madison over the last several years and watching landfill parts. So certainly, we'll come back and discuss, you know, what the Yahara Hills neighborhood plans once meant potentially to the school district and what it might mean for the future. But we'll talk about that another day, so. Now, here's Andrew.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you for having me at your school board meeting tonight. Jeff asked me to look into the crystal ball for the next ten years. So, here we go. Before I get too far into it, we can go to the next slide. I think it'll be beneficial. I think it'll be beneficial to kind of understand the past a little bit as we look towards the future. And I understand those numbers are going to be hard to read, but that top blue line is the total number of building permits per year we've issued from two thousand and ten through October of this year. And way in two thousand and ten, you're at about three hundred a year. And now we're in the six hundreds, we'll push towards the top line there is almost seven hundred. Um, and so you could kind of see a little bit of a pattern there where it kind of gradually goes up and then it plateaus for a couple of years and then it kind of gradually goes up and plateaus. The next line down, the orange line, tracks new uh dwelling units. Any type of dwelling unit, could be a single-family, detached home, attached housing, multifamily. But over that fifteen-year period, we've averaged sixty-five new dwelling units a year. Way on the left-hand side, again, that's two thousand and ten, if you remember, we're still kind of in the Great Recession and coming out of it, we had eight in two thousand and ten. In the peak there, that would have been around twenty seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, when the Juniper Ridge subdivision and the Prairie Place subdivision were at like peak construction years. Uh, interest rates were pretty favorable, a lot of market conditions were very favorable, just a lot of development occurring for our community. Um, and now towards the back end here, um, of that middle graph line there, uh, we're in more of that twenty-five to thirty a year. And that's primarily the Rosewood Fields subdivision, which I'll get to in a second. And it may not look like it, but there is a third line on this graph and it's on the bottom. And that's new commercial. Um, and it basically fluctuates from a low of zero to maybe a high of seven in a year, but the average is about one new commercial development a year. And oftentimes, that's a replacement for one that's been raised and a new building in its place. Um, so we don't have a, a ton of commercial development that's occurred in the last fifteen years. But that average is, you know, sixty-five a year, just keep that in mind. Next slide. Okay, so the next couple of slides, um, are, the background here is our zoning map, just to give you some context. Um, and so, um, what's currently under construction on the uh right-hand side here, the larger box there is Rosewood Fields uh subdivision. That's been under construction, it was approved in twenty twenty. Uh, it's a hundred and seventeen lots, it's mostly single-family lots, but with some um split duplexes. They've got nineteen lots remaining that we don't have an active building permit for. And they've been averaging about twenty to twenty-five a year. So I would expect that by this time next year, homes will still be under construction, but probably all of them will likely have a building permit for those lots. Smaller circle on the left, um, earlier this year, we approved uh two multifamily buildings, twelve total units, an infill site on Burma Road that's under construction now. Um, that Rosewood Fields site is a little less than forty acres and it has a net density of about seven dwelling units per acre. And it's mostly detached, single-family, so just kind of keep those numbers in mind. Next slide. Okay, so things that we've recently approved, but active construction isn't necessarily started yet. So just to the south of Rosewood Fields, on the other side of the railroad tracks, at the corner of Elvium and A B, is Spurley Corners. Uh, that's a Lake Stone Properties project, it's a hundred and forty-seven dwelling units. Uh, fourteen of those are duplex, there's another sixteen that are townhouses, and then the rest are multifamily apartments. Um, they'll start their first phase of that construction next spring. Depending, I wanted to give a personal thank you. Uh, the school board uh approved selling to the village a little bit of surplus land at the High School Ball Diamonds. That enabled us to move our proposed well number five site over a little and freed up two lots uh for two single-family homes. And I think it was a great example of the way the village and the school district have cooperated on a project that benefits us both. Next slide. Um, new development that's under review, uh, this is along Terminal Drive. Um, so this is the Humble Oaks, uh, this is Ryan Quam's property. Uh, in two thousand and nineteen, we approved a first-phase apartment building that was twenty-seven units. Um, in December, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Phases Two and Three, which is uh another sixty-some dwelling units, uh, two uh apartment buildings on that property. And then down the road, there'll be a fourth phase for another apartment building at some point in the future. Um, so, uh, I believe that public hearing is December sixteenth. If I have my date right, it's the third Tuesday of December. If people are interested, um, they can come to the public hearing for that. And if that's approved, um, that would be constructed in twenty-six and twenty-seven uh for those units. Next slide. All right, so switching gears, the background here is our uh future land use map from our comprehensive plan. We will be starting a project next summer to update our comprehensive plan. Uh, and that's likely going to be a year project. Um, but as we move now just to the north of Rosewood Fields along um A B and Broadhead Street and M N, uh, that first property going north is the Utter Property. It's about fifty acres. Um, it's planned for a variety of u- of uses, single-family, duplex, multifamily, mixed-use, commercial. The majority of it is uh residential and in what we would call our medium-density residential, which typically is about five to fifteen dwelling units uh net per acre. Um, so again, Rosewood Fields just to the south is a little over seven dwelling units net per acre. So, uh, you know, on the lower side, um, one thing that we did do with our twenty twenty-three East Side Plan, which is approved after the Rosewood Fields development, similar to kind of how Madison along certain transit corridors or high-traffic corridors has increased density. Uh, the village has done the same in our land use plans. Um, and so we have a little bit uh higher density in some of these areas than maybe we historically uh had in the past. The next one, next slide, please.
I have one question.
Yeah.
The Utter Property, does that back up to like the Gun Club?
No.
It does not. It is on the south side of M N and it is on the west side of A B. Adjacent to the Ball Diamonds and the Public Safety Center.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I would say for all of these, you know, ten years, certainly possible, why do I say that? In most cases, it's either in the village, um, the Utter Property currently is not, or it's in our urban service area, the Utter Property is in our urban service area already. Um, or it's sort of the next forty adjacent to an existing subdivision over.
But is that property attached to, is that, that McFarland?
Is it Town and Dunn?
It's still in the Town and Dunn.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It is?
Yes.
Well, that's a long way in there.
Yep. Um, so the next property moving north across Broadhead, uh, we get to Skollins' property. Um, again, a little over fifty acres here. Um, again, sort of looking at a, a medium-density residential of five to fifteen dwelling units per acre. Mostly going to be senior development, uh, very similar to their smaller existing Skollin Village on Elvium Road. Would differ a bit because it would probably have a little bit more diversity in units that could also include a- assisted living uh facility. This, of course, not directly uh probably adding students to the district, but indirectly would, um, if it allows um individuals to downsize out of their home and free those homes up for families to come into. Um, so, uh, would be a benefit uh to the district.
When is that coming on or?
Uh, good question. For all of these, it's, it's really landowner-dependent.
Okay.
You know, when are they ready to either sell their property to a developer or if the developer already owns it, when they're ready uh to bring plans forward? So, none of these have a definitive timeline other than, I feel pretty confident we should see something in the next ten years.
And Megan, this is the one that would be coming close to the, the Hope Rock.
Yeah, the north side of their property is adjacent to the south side of the Gun Club.
Yeah.
Next one. In between Juniper Ridge and uh the Gun Club, going up to Sigaco Road is the Nelson Property. And that one's a kind of a narrower forty-acre parcel, so it's not that traditional square of forty acres. Um, again, medium-density residential, that five to fifteen dwelling units per acre. Um, this is a property, again, it's in the village already, but not currently in our urban service area, but it is directly adjacent to developed subdivision.
And that's right next door to the, that's right next door to the solar panel area, I believe you are.
Yep, that would be on, uh, there's a, there's a small property in between them, but very close to it.
Okay, okay, good.
Greg, did you have another question?
I was just wondering where that, I can't, I can't tell where it's located exactly, that Nelson Property.
Uh, yeah, there's a red kind of circle there, uh, if you squint your eyes real well, you might be able to pick it up.
Yeah.
Okay, it's like on the other side of the street and back a little bit.
All right, come into general vicinity.
It's basically um directly south from Catalina Parkway. And I think I have one more. Yep, even smaller circle to read, but on the other side of the Gun Club, uh, there's a property owned by Interstate Partners, it's about sixty acres, but on the south end of it, adjacent to Skollins' property, um, we do identify in our East Side Plan uh some medium residential as well as the potential for some mixed use in that area. So again, you're in the five to fifteen dwelling units per acre. Um, and all of the, for this one, there's probably about five to maybe twenty uh acres out of that sixty that might be residential there on the south side. And that might have been my last one. Oh, I do have one more, thank you. North of Sigaco Road, adjacent to the Secret Places subdivision, uh, is the Peterson Farm. Uh, large amount of acreage here, but there is a portion, again, sort of in that five to twenty acres, identified for potential residential development adjacent to Secret Places uh and/or some stormwater management. There's also some areas identified uh on that property as well for like some neighborhood commercial to serve that area um as well.
Is that where you were considering the Business Park?
Yep, the purple on the map, um, that you see uh both on the Peterson Property and then the Interstate Partners' property on the south side of Sigaco Road, that is the Business Park identified portion. I think I have one more slide just to wrap up. Yep, so, um, a lot of people often ask, like, how do I keep track of when these developments might come forward, like Skollin or, or so forth? Um, if you go to my department page on the Community and Economic Development Department side, um, you just scroll down a little, you'll see a link for staying informed and involved and you can sign up. I send out one email a month that uh lists what's on the Planning Commission agenda in terms of development applications that are coming forward or if it's a pre-development meeting. Uh, and that's a great way to stay informed if you're not in a three-hundred-foot mailing radius of a property.
So, one question I had, so all the areas that you highlighted, they're zoned for development, but there's not any current development projects in place?
They're planned for development.
But there's nothing currently pending, correct?
Correct, yes, and they're, and oftentimes, they're not zoned for development yet. So they might still have like agricultural zoning. Um, and so our land use plans show a vision for that, uh, so we can show that to the property owners and developers. Then they come forward and, and submit their plans based on those visions. And at that point, they ask for rezoning, plat approval, those types of things.
I know nothing about urban planning, so.
That's okay.
Well, that's a good segue into what I was going to remind the public who's watching. Um, why we invite these folks here is because these urban planning, these developments, help us understand, like, it impacts our enrollment numbers. Um, it impacts our tax base, but for residential and then also for our taxpayers, the plan that you have, you know, part of why there are some districts that have more resources is because they have a larger commercial tax base, which we don't, which we're learning that we need to grow if we want to, you know, ease the tax burden for our taxpayers, for the school district. So, it's really great to hear all of these updates and for both of you, because whether you're in the City of Madison and adjacent to us, or you're in the village in our district, it's really impactful to how people live here. And so, wrapping up how that all impacts, I mean, some people might be watching and like, why are we, what, you know, listening to these community development presentations? And that's why, because it, it will impact taxes, our enrollment, the schools, um, and, and the amenities that we'll have here, so, thank you for that, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
I don't think I have any other questions, but that first um image you have with the commercial growth compared to like dwelling is um very eye-opening for the exact reasons that Megan just walked through. So, thank you for taking the time to come and share that with us.
And um, I bel- I think I know the answer to this, but all of these plans are already in your enrollment estimates, Jeff, right, future projections-ish?
So, all of those different areas at this point would not even probably hit most of our planning yet.
Right, because your projections go out ten years or twelve?
We go out five years.
Oh, five years, okay.
For our budgeting plans. And, you know, right now, anything that's really coming online is, we're graduating out faster still. So, we be, we're back into that cycle where we're infilling with open enrollment availability. But that's also what a lot of other school districts are doing right now. And with flat to declining birth rates across our state and even in this area, each district is struggling to really see that they're going to have high-growth rates unless they are in some of the communities really along the interstate corridors, um, to Forest, Sun Prairie. They're, they're growing.
They're growing.
But they're growing modestly. We're not seeing the growth that we had when residential growth was booming, so.
Okay.
So, to answer.
Yep.
It is in my estimates, but it's, it's a net zero.
Right, 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 which makes it all that much more important that, you know, this collaboration and information sharing between the village and the school district is so important because it's, it impacts both of us so much, so.
Yeah, and certainly when we, you know, were working with the city fifteen years ago, when they started out the year Hills Planning and then it finally got adopted in twenty eighteen, I think you mentioned, you know, there is a pretty good possibility. Uh, but again, it comes down to landowners that want to make decisions about their land and what they want to do with it. And for the most part, those landowners have held on to their property and developed some of those larger chunks, you know, light industry, solar panel areas. So that's kind of chopped up some of the areas that would have potentially had the need for us to have another, you know, elementary school.
Right.
Well, that's not there. And that's probably not needed for that area. So we'll watch how that whole area, uh, the school board will watch where that goes over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. Um, but we do have a large portion of our school district land area that is in the City of Madison. Town of Blooming Grove, which switches.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for this presentation. I'm just curious, is there any way, or how does McFarland compare to other communities? As far as percentage of people who are over sixty-five? Do, is there any way we know that? Do we have any of that information? I mean, my wife and I walk around the village all the time. And I, and everywhere I look, I'm going like, oh my gosh, they're my age or whatever. And again, I'm always, I'm always, remember your comment, Jeff, when you talked about people come to this community because of the schools and they come obviously when they're, they're younger and they love the fact that it's convenient, it's, you know, whatever, and they just stay here. And uh, my wife and I just are very aware of the fact that, holy cow, there are a lot of people who at some point are going to have to move. And I'm just wondering how we kind of compare with other communities, but I'm not sure there's any information of, that's ever been kind of compiled on that.
Yeah, I, I don't have it off the top of my head, it's easily to, to get that through the
Is it?
U S Census, you could compare.
Yeah.
Uh, they have. They have demographic information for age group.
Cause it's gonna change, it's gonna change really, I would think, quite, you know, within ten years, there's gonna be a number of people just moving to another part of their life, and, uh, it's gonna open up a lot of homes, it seems to me.
Going back to, in the last year when we did do a residential look at where our students live, less than twenty percent of our households in the village of McFarland had students living there. That didn't, that didn't analyze whether people didn't have children and they're under, let's say, sixty-two. But a lot more communities have a lot more, usually in the twenty-five to thirty percent, have student housing, you know, students.
Yes.
Going through the system where.
Interesting.
That's very interesting. Thanks so much, this is really good information.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good night. Alright. Alright, next we have, we have our, um, joint school board, village board planning committee meeting update. Is that our friends Meredith and Bruce?
Um, we went last Tuesday afternoon.
It was.
Um, I normally try and write something more than my scribble hand to share, and I did not do that this time around, so my apologies.
Still works.
Hopefully, close enough. Uh, Jeff and Erin gave some great updates about our budget, which I will not, um, reshare with you all here. Please watch our annual meeting and our, um, school board meeting prior to that. But kind of moving on to some of the things that we covered, um, as a part of the village, um, I think one of the biggest things I took away from it, um, was, I think, as a municipal government, I think our village has maybe some flexibility, that the school district does not have in terms of how they can spend, um, money, um, and, and what gets, um, levied. So I think it was, um, an interesting vantage point for me, knowing that like we, a lot of what we are stipulated by in the amount, um, that we can use money for is by the state. Um, and that's just not always the case for the village. And so sometimes when people compare the two entities, um, hopefully we're keeping in mind that we are, um, for lack of a better term, kind of hamstrung a little bit by what the state dictates to us. And so that's kind of one of the big lessons I think I learned. What was the other thing I wanted to be sure to mention? And because of that ability, um, I do think the village is being really thoughtful on, um, how they're working, um, to, to look at what the, the tax will be, the property tax will be for the, the, um, our residents. So, um, I found that very just enlightful, enlightening rather. And I can't read my other thing that I said. So I guess it wasn't that important.
Meredith, you did a good job.
Okay, thanks.
We, we were there, and I, I think what the, what the public needs to know is that the village gets it, the district gets it, we're doing what we can. Your word was very well, we're somewhat hamstrung, not somewhat, we are hamstrung by, again, the formula for funding both the village and the school district. And, you know, I just, I want the public to be aware, we are doing everything we can to try to find ways that we can collaborate, work together, to try to, you know, make, or I guess squeeze the most out of the, um, the revenue that we have at our discretion. So, um, I, I'm just, I'm just really pleased because this is, it is, it's something that in the last three or four years, I guess it's now going on four years. I think we've made tremendous strides, I, and let's hope we can keep on going even further with it. And I think, uh, I think that's one of the really wonderful things that I've seen since I've been on this board.
Yeah, and the, the last one was about their update about the community park, so.
Yes, well, that's an example of just that.
Really good.
Yeah, and the solar, uh, they, we have the, uh, now eight acres that is being developed right now, right off Sigoco. And, uh, that's gonna be, you know, again, helping with, uh, well, I guess, uh, Alliance Energy is, is kind of building that, but that's gonna help the village. And that should provide really for the, uh, the government, the village, uh, buildings, and I think as much of the school district, except for, I think, WIS, will all be getting their, their energy from that, which is, is good for the, it's good for everybody.
When are they gonna break ground on that?
That's already going.
That's, yeah.
It's about half done.
We got to see, yeah, pictures of updates, like it is. I think they, what do you say, the, either the bottom or the top panels are all on, and now we do the other side, so it's, it's well on its way.
I don't know if you can, because.
I don't think you can.
Again, you have that, um, substation that goes between there. But that's very close, that area where you were, you were pointing to, um, that, or we were talking about with this presentation. So we've done some good things, and we just gotta keep on looking for opportunities where we can work together.
Not as easy as it.
No.
Speak into the microphone, Greg.
Not as easy as it may sound.
But we're always working, we're looking for those opportunities.
Yep, yep, well, and we, and, you know, there's, there's other meetings where we have conversations too. You know, there's the strategic ones between the administrators and the presidents, and I have a meeting with Stephanie just to maximize those, like because of the, because of how closely it's related, and they're working really hard to keep, like to be creative about keeping their budget as low as possible, like what you said, so that, you know, overall the taxpayers are having the, still getting amenities for their tax dollars, and, you know, but keeping it low cost.
Yeah, and our group meets every couple of months, but I know that Erin and Megan, you're meeting with, with Matt, and, um, you, you guys are, you know, doing that on a regular basis. And so I think, Craig, you're absolutely spot on, it's not easy, but at the same time, it's not for lack of effort and, and being creative. And I think that's what, that we should be pleased with.
Yeah.
At least now both entities wanna do it.
Yeah, you've seen it come a long ways.
Well, there was a time.
It didn't happen.
Oh, Melanie, thank you for that post today explaining the taxes, the school property tax.
Yeah, I think that.
That was very helpful.
The collaborative work with the, with the park is, as, as Bruce says, another good example, multiple uses for our community. Uh, we also talked about our collaboration, just that we've been having meetings about the youth center and collaborating on that, so there's constant conversations beyond the joint meetings. And I think the joint meetings though, however, often talk about our, our larger collaborative projects that are moving forward, and the others are more brainstorm updates kind of meetings.
Where's the community park?
That's the one that, that will be the intermediate school.
Okay.
No, that's the inclusive part.
Oh, that's inclusive, I'm sorry, okay, the one that they were talking about, sorry.
Is AB and Sigoco, basically.
Yeah.
Just a little bit south.
Okay.
That's where the new Sacker fields will be, and then there's other, yeah.
And cross country.
Sorry.
And cross country, yeah. Okay, any other updates? Thank you for that lovely update. Alright, um, now we have, uh, Ms. Chapman with legislative update.
Now you guys get to listen to me talk.
Now you can make us.
Dump it down, Megan, dump it down.
We got a big one to talk about, cellphone policy. Now, nice thing is, McFarland is already ahead of the game, okay? But just to inform everyone, Governor Evers did sign in a new state law, it is Act Forty-two, and it gives all public schools up to July of twenty twenty-six to put in place a process where students cannot use their cellphones during class time. Uh, but that being said, there are some caveats within that law where they can use their device if there is an emergency for a health reason, if they have an IEP or a five oh four plan, um, if it's needed for learning, or if it's a school issued device. So sometimes people say, well, why do we need a cellphone law? Um, and I think we can all agree that our lives are controlled by our phones. I know myself, I put my phone in my bag, so I can't even see it, um, you know, for meetings such as this. And I think it's important that our students are given the directive of education as critical distractions needed to be minimized. And so, um, that's ultimately why that law was put into place, and also to create a more positive classroom, um, environment.
Do the teachers like that?
Yes.
Generally?
I think that's the feedback.
Yeah.
I know it's early, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, keep in mind, we've, we've had policies in place prior to the law. The biggest difference that we had is that the high school this year changed to having wall pockets in the classrooms. So kids put those in when they come into the room. And I've heard very positive things from the staff, they've said the students have done a great job with it, and I've heard compliments from the students.
Yes.
I actually did chat with my kiddo about it, and I said, how's it going? He's like, well, it's not great, but you know, I'm like, well, are you learning more? He goes, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what my granddaughter said as well.
That's what they're saying.
She said, it is made of, and she's only a sophomore, it's made a big difference.
And you know, there's that whole saying, like, out of sight, out of mind, and it kind of puts it into perspective just how much you are, like just ensconced in your phone. And so since we already have those rules in place, just to kind of reiterate what McFarland's policy is, um, all high school students, they come into a class, they put it into the little cellphone holder, and then they get it back in between class, and then, um, from what I understand, they can use it during passing time as well as lunch? Okay.
Correct.
Fantastic. And then for, um, Wasby Sun, Indian Mound, it's, uh, off and away during the day. And then if they are using it, the teacher, the staff can take it away.
Off and away means just in, on their person?
In their backpack, I believe, or in the other fashion.
We don't check where it is, off and away wherever away is. Um, what we don't wanna get into is situations where we're checking kids' pockets.
Yeah.
So if we don't know if it's there, cause it's off, so be it.
And then MPS, no phones, at all. Um, and so, essentially, that's all I had for a legislative update. I mean, you know, there's not a whole lot going on right now.
I think that's a big deal.
On, on a state public education level, I'll put it that way.
Right.
So, you know, who knows what'll happen come my next legislative update?
I would, I would bet over a period of time that academic performance will improve, specifically because of the cellphone.
I wonder how much like twitching went on in like the first week of the policy.
Professional development opportunity that a lot of our teachers and administrators are partaking in and reading the book, The Anxious Generation, and I'm totally not gonna remember the author's name. But I'm tagging along on their efforts to keep me solid on reading it. So, yeah, it's, I think it's been really interesting, we had the, on the first session, there's a virtual and in-person, just to hear feedback from teachers, um, teachers who are also parents, and just kind of what that difference is and understanding what the impact is. And then as the book is progressing, like what we can actually do, and what those negative consequences really are to not having, um, I call it like an embodied childhood, or he calls it that as well, like just, you lose out on a lot when you're on your phone. So it's, I don't know, it's been really interesting, and thank you to all the staff who are really actively, um, engaging with that development opportunity and taking it back to your classrooms. It's really been very informative.
Oh, another great documentary to check out is The Social Dilemma. Um, I actually need to re-watch it, cause I've been sucked back into the book of face, as I like to call it. But it gives a very interesting perspective on, um, how platforms will actually like target you and try to keep you more engaged on your phone.
It was, excuse me just a second, it, it was something that even I was aware of when I was teaching it then. I mean, I finally banned them. But the problem we had was we had so many different kind of rules going on. Some teachers allowing it, some not, that became a nightmare. And that's where I really applaud that the administration was, heads, you know, ahead of the, the curve, as it were. And, and getting back to what you said, Craig, it's gonna help academic, but it's gonna, I think, also help mental health. I think that's just as important, so I think we're, we're doing some really good things. I think it's really good.
No, that's okay, the Cap Times, was it Cap Times article that you shared?
Yes.
That our superintendent was quoted in, by the way. But one of the, I don't, it wasn't our school, but the, there was an anecdote in there that's, that for one of the schools that had banned them for, it was probably like intermediate age, like WIS age kids, um, during lunchtime, the teachers were saying that it's allowed in the, in the lunchroom again.
Yeah.
Because the kids are interacting with each other instead of their phones. And then, and there was something else, and they also noticed that kids were slowing down eating. They're not like shoving their faces to, you know.
Cause they're talking.
To sit, yeah, exactly, so.
They don't have a lot of time.
So that's a, so that's just like anecdotally, you know, what we can see, what for mental health and social, you know, emotional learning stuff.
The Anxious Generation will be a community read as well. The staff are just reading it first, we have almost a hundred staff members that are participating in the teacher study group, so there will be a community read, and then there will be two, uh, events in the community at the library where people can get together and talk about the book together.
Thanks for noticing that, that's good, that's good.
But it's, it's alarming.
It's, it, it gives you pause, like it's definitely like stopped me in my, in my tracks. Like it was, it's, um, a good wake-up call, so it's.
Yeah.
Good job, Megan.
Yeah, thank you for that, thank you for the update, and thanks for doing it.
And I love how it turned into an organic cultural conversation.
Um, and there is, just because I'm still learning, the resources that Wasby offers us, you can sign up for different newsletters.
Yep.
And the legislative update, um, is one of those, and that's kind of interesting.
That was today.
Yeah, so.
And what I would say too is to always keep in mind, and Megan and I chatted about this too, is just be careful when you hear about a different bill or something that's been proposed, we quickly assess the likelihood of it actually getting passed, and then pay attention to the ones that are likely to get passed. So sometimes we can get our alarms up and like Chicken Little, and we're running around, and people will call, and they'll be like, what are we gonna do? If they do, slow down. There's, it's just an idea, and that's how legislation works, so.
Yeah, it's interesting to keep tabs on what our legislators are thinking about. Or, or it might not be our legislators, but like statewide legislators, and then to see what doesn't.
Informative, but not immediate, yeah.
Right, exactly, yeah, thank you, Megan, appreciate that. Okay, next, um, we have some discussion items. Board meeting agenda timeframes, do you wanna set us up for that, Erin?
Sure, I do. So one of the things that we've talked about is trying to be as efficient as possible with our board meetings. And we've noticed sometimes that things vary between not just what I'm estimating, but the, the time allotments that are provided for different presentations, specifically when we have outside groups come and present. And so, um, President Fessler and I were discussing this, and wanted to bring this forward to you for discussion. And we brainstormed some ideas, so these, this is not, you know, an exhaustive list, it's meant to get the conversation started, the discussion started, about what we could do to make sure that we make the best use of our time together, which is limited. And one idea, of course, was to start with by, by providing the timeframe to the presenters in advance of them presenting, um, both as they're planning, but then also at the start of their presentation, to just let them know, just a reminder, you have this many minutes. And then about halfway through, that a board member could remind them, just, just, just to note, you're about halfway through your time, to help them, kind of a time check. Um, and then a final check when it gets to the end. Of course, you know, the, we don't have to cut them off and say, you must leave, your mic has been turned off, please, I see the media. We can extend that time, but at least it gives a sense to them of where they are, cause it's, it's hard, and you have a lot of ideas and things, and they lose track too, and, and then we're leaving here much later than we should. So just throwing out those ideas for your discussion, other ideas that you have to, to help us make efficient use of our time.
Yeah, I think one thing I didn't realize, you know, we have, we see the time estimates on the minutes that, um, the McFarland minutes notes that Erin provides, but I didn't realize that he also provides a shorter amount of time typically to the presenter. So his time allows for, that we see. So his time allows for, that we see allows for questions and discussion. Um, and we ju, yeah, we just see a lot of overages, and so...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. What do you guys think?
I think it's great. I mean, you know how much I love keeping track of time, so, you know. It's the, you know, military bread in me coming out. So, uh, no, I think it's great, and I appreciate you guys putting that together.
Yeah, I think when you get up there and you start talking, you lose track of how much time you're actually talking. And, I mean, we're an intimidating bunch, so, like, it, um, I think it's, it, people get nervous. And that's okay, and sometimes you ramble, like I'm doing, so I'm fully supportive.
Yeah, I didn't even think about it like that, like, from the presenter's standpoint. Like, oh, yeah, I, if I were doing that, I would want a gentle reminder, like, you know, you gotta wrap it up or you're off, you know, you've got like half, halfway to go.
I'd rather do that than lose...
You need to be cognizant of, if they've only got fifteen minutes, we shouldn't take seven of them, you know, with questions and such.
Yep, also a good point, yep, so...
And I think that's part of it too, is, um, so, just for, during discussion, you know, following a presenter, to just be cognizant of that. You know, if somebody said something, maybe I don't need to say it.
He looked, he looked right at me.
I did not. I actually looked at Meredith.
He was looking at me!
I'm, I'm definitely guilty of that too, so...
Not intentionally, but because I make eye contact with you. But I do think it's important to, just to be cognizant of that ourselves.
Yes, yes.
True.
Yep.
Yes.
It's an excellent point.
Bruce is always the culprit.
There's so much love in this room tonight.
All right, wonderful. So, um, I guess, are there any volunteers who would wanna do that timekeeping reminder?
I would love to do that.
I think, Megan, you'd be very good at it.
Thank you. Can I get a bell?
A whole idea.
There's one right there.
I would just look like, "Okay, here's your ten-minute reminder. Ding."
It is important to think about if there would, I don't know about a bell, but some way to...
Yes.
Acknowledge to them.
Mm-hmm.
Well, now, like, Angie always did a great job when we have public comments and you have five minutes to do your public comments. She had a very pleasant alarm on her phone.
I thought it was her phone.
But then again, I don't wanna get sucked into my phone ping.
He just looked right at her.
I'm sure I can find something that's like, "Ooh, signal bell. Ding."
Well, and we'll, you know, we'll live into it.
We could try some things, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
No, I, I volunteer myself to be the timekeeper.
All right, awesome.
We die gross.
Thank you for volunteering.
Let's go.
All right.
And just to let you know, we're doing great on time thus far.
Amazing.
Turned over a new leaf.
In fact, we're actually ahead of it. We're ahead of schedule.
I do appreciate your timekeeping stuff. Amazing. All right, awesome. Thank you for being open to that.
Anna Cohn.
Yes. Yes, yes, thank you. Okay.
The full session is December fifteenth and seventeenth?
Yep, awesome. Thank you.
Look at her go!
That follow-up.
That's appreciate that. She's the class president, right? Senior class president?
I don't know. I don't remember.
Sure.
She's one of the officers. Yep.
She's the president.
Amazing.
Let's go with yes.
All right. Okay, thank you all for being open to that. Um, next we have our district administers report.
Yes, we do. We'll start with some pictures from around the district. Here you have at MPS in October, Ms. Carrie, that's Carrie Ferguson. She's an orientation and mobility specialist with CISA Two. She came in to talk to Ms. Presser's class about White cane day. So they got to learn about, um, and celebrate their classmate, Nell, who actually uses a cane herself. So sometimes you'll see these days that we list off, you know, in the recognition. And here's an example of a classroom learning about one of their, their classmates and some assistance that they need and...
Awesome.
Kind of a neat event. Moving on, you have the axolotls.
Oh, that is the hardest word to say.
It is, I know, but the kid, the students just love those axolotls in Megan Albrecht's class.
They're not real though, right?
Yes, they are.
They are.
It's, yeah, Jello and Creech.
Oh, wow.
Jello's Henry's favorite, the whole thing.
They might sound like a Pokémon, but they're an actual creature.
Are they lizards? They're like amphibian things.
Yeah.
Yeah, like in the aquarium behind.
I'm doing a really poor description.
Yeah, but they're not lizards. I think probably, um, Megan Albrecht could be offended, maybe, if we said that. I don't know exactly what they are, but the students do, and she does.
Apparently, we need to go back to Ms. Albrecht's class.
So, very fun. Just look at that.
Okay, so, hold on, we're ahead of schedule. So what do axolotls do, I, you're welcome. What do axolotls do at the spa?
Oh, I don't know. What do they do?
Relax a lot.
Oh, my God.
I give kudos to my son, Henry, for that one. Thank you for sharing. Now everyone knows your joke.
That's awesome!
What is Creech?
Thank you, Mrs. Albrecht.
And you know what? It's really fun to say, relaxolotls.
Those are the names of their classroom axolotls.
Jello and Creech, huh?
Those are the names of the axolotls.
Wow.
So I'm sorry.
Anyway, um...
Yes, squirrel.
Here we have our, our fifth to seventh grade orchestra students. They went on a field trip there. They saw the Madison Symphony Orchestra.
Oh, wow.
Symphony spooktacular. That's my scary voice. Um, no rehearsal with that for me, but, uh, the music boosters help support that opportunity for them. So thank you to them for providing that experience. To our kids, our students. Here you see Family Consumer Science. They, they, this project, they're talking about food safety, so they made their very own, um, microorganism characters, their own bacteria, and wrote, um, stories from the perspective of a microorganism. Very clever. She's very creative as a teacher, so...
That's a, that's a really great example of that cross-literacy. What's the official term of the literacy within other...
Disciplinary literacy?
Thank you. Disciplinary literacy.
Yes.
Cool.
Excellent example. Perspective-taking. Uh, Community Day, which seventh grade has been doing for several years. Now, they, they started it off by reading to first graders. So love, we always love to see the cross-age activities. So seventh graders and first graders, come on.
That is tremendous.
That is wonderful.
That is wonderful.
Thank you to everybody involved in organizing that. Um, the little VR, little virtual reality for our seventh grade social studies students, taking a virtual field trip. So you think about, how can technology benefit our students? Well, they got to go to Egypt.
That's so cool.
That's really neat.
Yeah, right?
VR glasses are awesome.
Yeah.
So, very cool. Exciting. Thanks for organizing that. And then eighth graders doing a little, digging up some fossils. So that continues with our new, um, science teachers, uncovering fossils. They're very fun. Doing that in eighth grade. Moving on to the high school. I've talked a little bit about Girl Up lately, and this was, they had a guest speak, speaker come from the Domestic Abuse Intervention Services. So talking about teen dating violence. Unfortunately, a, a reality, something that they need to learn about. And just so impressed with that, that group, and a nice-sized group. Well-led and organized.
Who's the advisor for Girl Up?
Doing good work.
Must be a science teacher, 'cause I saw it in their hallway.
Who is, who is? I'll have to look it up, 'cause I don't know if Mariel is anymore. I don't think she is anymore.
Ms. McAllier?
She was.
Yeah.
But I don't think she is anymore.
I just love what they're trying to do, so I would love to go to a meeting.
You should.
Angie's gonna look it up for us.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's Jill Kavanaugh and Kelly Thompson.
Oh, I love them both.
Thank you for double-checking.
I love them both, okay.
Um, here we had a little, uh, guest speaker coming in for marketing from the Madison Mallards, coming in to talk about marketing. And certainly, I'd say the Mallards do a great job, marketing, so...
They do.
Really engaging, real-world application for marketers. And of course, you heard a little bit about It's a Wonderful Life. I know some of you were able to see it. I was able to see it, had a great time.
What is the capacity of the Black Box Theater-ish?
You know, I don't know. I'm not, 125? Okay, 'cause I'm not, that's not a strength of mine, estimating numbers. Um, 125-ish, good. Yeah, I, it was a really good setting for that. Um, I thought the size, it just, you felt like you were a little more intimate, and you really could hear well. That's one of the things I really noticed. Could hear every word. My favorite part was the commercials, I have to say. I know, I mean, I know that the acting, great, great storytelling. I know the story very well. But the creativity, when they made their own commercials for our local businesses...
That is so cool.
So good.
That's cool.
Yep. Total Body Training was my favorite, although, I don't know. We had, um, hey, congratulations to Hannah Kirch, our Optimist Student Senior of the Month. And a very deserving recognition. It was a really powerful meeting, getting to thank her for all she's done. And she could stick it all forever.
Also a member of the state cross-country team.
She, and she had...
She was the captain.
Yeah.
She was a great leader.
Had, had just competed, I think. I think it was the Tuesday after. Yes. We had sent a nice group of students to the three sixty-five Leadership Summit. That's something that continues, just gonna, kinda highlight that that's something that Brittany Brazel was involved in before. I know Kelly Thompson has been involved and, um, the advisor that, um, took the group of students there. And they got to connect with State Senator Kelda Royce as well. So awesome for them to hear about leadership and overcoming challenges. Those are amazing leaders right there.
What a great experience.
That's true.
This was, some people wonder what we do on a professional development day. So highlighted some of our curriculum councils, which meet all throughout the district. This, I think, was special education, I think. So, you know, they're talking about all kinds of important things. I went from mash, math ratios to learning about Scarborough's reading rope. Something to learn about. Um, they were talking about service minutes and strategies, um, there, um, student responses, just really good stuff. So, we thank parents for occupying their children, so we can learn together. Of course, the report card results are out. Lots to celebrate. Um, here, a district that, according to the state, exceeds expectations and fifth in the area. Special highlight, uh, for the middle school, really kinda knocked it out of the park. So really great job, really impressed with our results. Always some growth, some things to work on as well. So, we've identified some areas and are doing some things. The one thing I was actually, um, being interviewed by the Leader Independent today about our state report card, and I mentioned to him is that any curricular change you take, you make, takes just years to see the results. And so, we're starting to see the literacy changes that were implemented start to take effect in the, in our achievement.
That's great.
Other things, um, going on, I wanted to recognize a couple, three actually, donors who, very generous. The first one, um, Peggy Anderson, who made a very generous donation to, for Negative Lunch Balances.
Oh, wow.
Um, very generous.
She's a great lady.
Yeah, really special person and was shocked, um, by her generosity. Um, Rita Sears also donated, uh, for Negative Lunch Balances as well, so thank you to Rita.
Another wonderful woman.
Yes, and, and Chad and Melissa Berry also donated a vehicle to our tech ed auto department. So always appreciate that, if anybody's got something they're trying to get rid of.
Quick question. If people wanted to donate to Negative Lunch Balances, how would they go about doing it?
The easiest way is probably just to send them to me.
Okay.
Um, you can send them to the Food Service Department, but, you know, it's easier to go to me. What I will say is that we do appreciate that. We're actually in a really good spot after those two donations, so... I would say, don't worry about that now. Give money to the food pantry. Um, that money goes a really long way when you give it to the food pantry. So, um, thank you for that. Also, uh, had the seventh grade Courage Retreat. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard wonderful things about it. So high school students, small groups with seventh grade students. And we have an outside, um, group that comes in and does a lot of fun, team-building activities, which is focused on really, students have the courage to be themselves and to stick up for others. So kind of an anti-bullying, um, pro-ally message. Uh, we talked a little bit of, about Veterans Day, great celebrations throughout the district. WABE always has a great assembly. Had the sixth grade band and choir orchestra concert. I was not able to attend, but it's always a great thing. The McFarland School's Equity Collective also met, continuing to talk about financial needs and ways we can improve access for families, remove barriers and stigma to getting support. And then also looking at how people that are able to and would like to give can do so. Had our Employee Relations Committee, focused on some handbook changes, mostly minor things. Great discussion, very engaged group, and, and, uh, really enjoyed that time. It is American Education Week this week, so time where we celebrate our staff. Um, anybody that works with kids, as a teacher, so, and an educator. So, thank you to our amazing staff. Coming up, um, we have, uh, Reality Zone is tomorrow, um, for our high school juniors. So half go this time, half in the spring, where they do a financial literacy exercise and, um, get an occupation, housing, children, insurance, all of those kind of things. So always a good event. And then Wednesday is Educational Support Professionals Day, where we really celebrate our, um, amazing education support professionals. That, that's everybody from instructional assistants to bus drivers, to custodians, health assistants, um, school nutrition, so very blessed with our administr, administrative assistance as well. Substitute Educators Day is the twenty-first. Uh, we have a fall break with Thanksgiving on the twenty-seventh. And the twenty-ninth is Native American Heritage Day. And, um, then we'll be back here. We don't come back until December. Uh, December is Spartan University Indifference Month, where we celebrate a stronger, wiser, and more creative Spartan community. So that includes people from all cultures, backgrounds, and perspectives to help add the unique color of our district. And we're back here for a school board meeting. Those are all my updates. What do you all have?
I just wanted to, I, we, I don't think we can really talk much about it, 'cause it's an agenda item. But, um, thank you to Meredith and Bruce for doing office hours this weekend. Um, really, really appreciate that.
Did you have, did you engage with some folks?
Oh, we had lots of casual conversation.
Well, we had both.
We had both.
Yeah, we had some good stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for those who stopped by.
Yes.
Yeah, awesome.
Yes, thank you for doing that.
Um, I wanted to call out, um, MPS, um, families, um, and staff that I think it was in their socktober drive. Um, they collected over one thousand pairs of socks. Um, and as it gets colder, I think that's extra important. Um, so I just, I saw that number and I was like, "Oh, that's absolutely amazing." So, um, very good work.
Awesome. Cool. Anyone else? All right.
All right.
Thank you. All right, we are on to action items. Um, the action on the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven district calendar. You have some background you wanna provide us with?
Yes, I can. So we have, um, a volunteer staff committee that works together on the calendar. Comes together, looks at the calendar. What we do is we, we take the current calendar and, um, cast forward and see what that looks like, and then start moving things around as we see fit. The group had a really robust discussion and ended up, um, what we're bringing forward to you with the recommendation is pretty much the calendar we have this year. So, um, it involves, uh, four days in August. So, um, it involves, uh, four days in August, which staff really appreciate having those days before school starts. A reminder, you cannot start school before September first in the state of Wisconsin. If you'd like to lobby for something, that would be something to lobby to get changed, in my opinion, so it really restricts school districts.
Yes.
Um, yes, and then, um, we try to have, uh, professional development scattered throughout the year. And, um, of course, holiday is, one of the things people have really appreciated is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, having that day off. That's been one of those that we didn't use to have, and it's kind of, it's, it's stuck, it's not going anywhere. Um, staff really appreciate it.
No, that was a morale booster.
Yeah, yeah, they really do appreciate it, this, um, the recommendation coming forward is again to have a two-week winter break, and we looked at ways to shorten that break and to have, try to end the school year earlier. But the school year ends on a Wednesday next year, so you have to trim off three days to get to Friday, and then that didn't, didn't really work, um, so ended up bringing forward. Sent this out to staff then, after the committee came to consensus, and I didn't really hear anything back. Um, I know some people have different opinions, but, you know, it's, there's no perfect calendar.
I think, I say this every year, I don't think people be, can begin to realize what a difficult task that is. You know, I would, I would recommend trying it sometime if, if, uh, it's, it's just so many wants and needs and different
Constrains.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's great, we, I really appreciate all the work that committee and others do.
No, I think that people have been happy with what we've done, so, it's good that we're keeping it up.
It's a, you know, one of the things we really do try to do is mirror our neighbors when we can. And that's primarily due to our, so many of our staff, so few of our staff live in district boundaries. So, you wanna try to mirror it when you can.
Right, and thanks for working with those other districts to kinda help with that.
Yep, that's great, thank you.
Good work.
Alright, um, so I would entertain a motion, um, for the twenty twenty-seven twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven district calendar.
I would move to approve the school district of McFarland twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven calendar as recommended by administration on behalf of the calendar committee.
Thank you, Mr. Howery, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, all the H's again, alright, um, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero, um, and then we have similar action next on the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven four K McFarland calendar. I think that's pretty much, it just follows the same.
Follows that, and one of the things I, I'll add to it is that we work really closely, um, you know, with our community partners on that calendar, and Emily Broom really leads that work, so special thanks to her as the four K coordinator. The, the one thing I didn't mention in the, in the first part, we also come up with a makeup day calendar. So, if we exceed our three days for weather-related cancellations, how we're gonna make up those days. So.
Okay, okay.
And that, that is, you'll see that reflected in the four K calendar, where it's in purple, where it says makeup Fridays if needed cuz they don't typically have school on Fridays.
Right, yep, okay, alright, any other discussions or questions? And I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the school district of McFarland twenty twenty-six, twenty seven, four K calendar as recommended by administration on behalf of the calendar committee.
I can second.
Thank you. Alright, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, alright, motion carries five zero. Now we have our action on the second reading of the policies we talked about at our last meeting. Um, we didn't, uh, we did not have any updates or changes to any of those, so, um, I think unless anyone has any further discussion, let's, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies as recommended by administration.
I'll second that.
And she does it so fast.
Do I need to say the whole thing again?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Five one three zero withdrawal, drop out from school, five three one zero dot zero one, emergency nursing services, five four one one, third grade promotion and retention at-risk students, five five oh five academic honesty, five five three zero, student use or possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia, seven four four zero dot zero three small unmanned aircrafts and dr- systems, drones, seven four five zero property inventory, seven four five five accounting system for capital assets, eight one two zero volunteers eight four two zero school safety, eight five zero zero school nutrition services, eight five one zero wellness, eight five three one green reduced price meals, eight five four zero vending machines eight five five zero competitive food sales, nine one five one, use of cameras and other recording devices in locker rooms.
How do you do that?
It just makes me laugh.
Very good.
I will second that.
Very good.
Oh, okay, Fisher, seconds, okay, um, alright, eh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, motion carries five zero. Okay, and then, um, next, action on McFarland High School's Spring Early College Credit and Start College Now program requests.
Nothing to really share, um, then I guess just for the public is, one of the things that we do is, about this time of year there's students who apply for these programs for early college credit and the Start College Now programs. And our amazing student services team reviews courses that are available both within, um, the district and through the Wisconsin Virtual Academy, you'll see a lot of courses for DCA, Destinations Career Academy as well as what prerequisites are necessary for someone to sign up for that class, so when you see classes that are denied requests that are denied, that is the reason why, because it falls into one of those other categories, and we're able to provide those at a lower cost.
I would move to approve the course approvals and denials for the early college credit and Start College Now program requests as recommended by the McFarland High School Administration.
Thank you, Craig.
I can second that.
Okay, thank you, is there any further discussion?
We have some smart kids.
Yeah, I noticed a lot of, um, medical and financial and
Nursing.
Yes, very, um.
And a long list of students applying to, to take advantage of that, so, that's great. Alright, um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, motion carries.
Can I just clarify, was that motion by Howery, seconded by Fisher?
Yes. Yep. Yep, you got it. Alright, last but not least, on action is the recommended, um, WEVA, um, DCA IS W I. Insight that was. You were right, it's like, sometimes I wanna use the acronym and then the other acronyms don't roll off the tongue, so then I wanted to say the whole thing. So anyway, um, yes, and Insight Schools, um, statute one one eight dot four zero eight G student transfers to resident districts.
I move to approve the WEVA Destinations Career Academy and Insight School of Wisconsin recommended student transfers back to their resident districts due to lack of engagement.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you both, um, any discussion or questions?
Well, the list is getting longer.
Yeah.
I noticed that.
And we are unfortunately starting to see some of those younger grades pop up. Um, I mean, and WEVA is doing everything in their power to, you know, try to make contact and whatnot, so appreciate their due diligence with that. Um, and it's unfortunate to see that some of these kiddos, uh, get moved back to their home districts.
I sus- I suspect, you know, many of those circumstances, especially with the younger kids, is due to, um, the parents being unable to, you know, they talk about three hours a day, you know, two to three hours a day and, you know, there's a lot of households that they don't have two or three hours a day, they, every, everybody has to work.
And they are really working as, you know, diligently, diligently as they can, but let's face it, I don't know if virtual school is for everyone, and I think in many cases, these are people trying something out, and more power to them and more power to our district for giving that opportunity to do that, but I don't know if it is for everyone, I think one of the things we learned from the whole COVID experience was that, you know, virtual school is, is not gonna work for everyone.
You get out of it what you put into it.
No, it's not easy, exactly.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Alright, um, so all in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, motion carries five zero. Uh, that concludes our business, why I look for a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn this evening's school board meeting.
Alright.
I'm trying to come up with something to make it sound official.
Thank, thank you. Yep, alright, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, motion carries, we are adjourned at eight forty-one.
And I would just like to say as the official timekeeper, we came in ahead of schedule.
That's pretty good.
Where do you think we made up time?